I don't have one.
How are you?
All right. We'll call it to order. It is 6:11 PM, the 2nd of September 2020. Evacuation procedures are out the door on either side of the hallway which you came from. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to flag the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Whenever you're ready. Here.
Here.
So, we'll move on to consent agenda approval. And can I accept? I'm only showing H on my consent agenda. F, is that right? Okay. Okay. So, can we have a motion to accept the recommendation that Superintendent approve, accept and acknowledge consent agenda items 2B through 2H? Dean with the first. Delly with the second. Any discussion on consent items? Vote. Yes. Six-zero motion carried. We move on to reports. And I have nothing to report, just that it's time, week after next. So, having said that, we'll give it to the administration.
So, to echo what Mr. Clark just said, certainly been a challenging summer, but I'm confident that our buildings are ready to go. Commends Mr. Schwartz and his maintenance staff for getting our buildings ready to go. It's been a challenge, you know, getting a lot of things out of classrooms to increase space, to provide the social distancing required for students. Commends Mr. Roth and the IT staff, what they've done this summer, preparing classrooms and a lot of logistical things that they've done with printers throughout the building and the Chromebook distribution that's been going on this week to students. It seems to be going very well. I've seen many parents in and out of the IT office picking up their Chromebooks. Obviously, the administrative team has worked tirelessly on schedules and safety protocols and all those types of things. So, ultimately, it's been a challenge, but I think we're ready. We're ready to receive our staff on Tuesday of next week, the 8th, for four straight days of superintendent's conference days. And then, we're ready to receive our students on September 14th, albeit in a different type of educational environment, but one we're prepared for nonetheless. There will be information going up on the website in coming days, if not tomorrow, for parents of both buildings. Our principals are working hard on that regarding a lot of the logistics to reopening. And some letters coming home in the next couple of days, if not early next week, for a variety of things from transportation to reopening. And there's a couple of agenda items tonight that I want to make sure I comment on now. We have a few elementary teachers that are choosing to retire from the district. And I certainly want to take this time to thank them for their dedication and service to the district. There's a lot of difficult things going on, but I wish them well in their retirement. They certainly earned it and deserve it. They will be sincerely missed in this district. And we're going to do our best to fill their roles. We'll continue to provide their children with a quality education. But be remiss if I didn't take my time to speak as a chance to wish them the best of luck, thank them, and hopefully wish them well and healthy in all their future endeavors. So, thank you to the two retirees that are on this. You will be missed. That's for me.
Okay, no legislative report this month. Dean, you want to touch base on the finance committee?
Just got out of a finance committee meeting. I think everyone's aware that the government is about with a 20% reduction in state aid. Not sure how long that'll go for, at least for future. And we've already had reductions in 20% on one payment that we received. And anticipating more to come. And trying to close that gap budget that's already been adopted. It's almost ludicrous that the government, after everything is done, and say, "Well, sorry, folks, this is the way it's going to be." So, we're not destitute. We're actually in fairly better shape than probably some of our partners. There are some things you can do. But it's going to be an ongoing process. And there is not going to be any more revenue gain that will get us through the whole year. Because there's too many moving parts. We don't know if there's going to be federal aid coming. We don't know if the state's bluffing on some of this, trying to posture to get more federal aid. There are a lot of unknowns. Basically, we could simply take it, for the most part, one aid statement at a time as they're coming in. And we will have to make whatever necessary changes we can and utilize whatever we can out of our reserve accounts. We're limited on what we can do, but there are some things we can do. We've had two. We are offering an early retirement incentive. We've had two teachers that have taken this up on that, which amounts to $140,000 savings after the incentive. Then, there's other things that we're looking at. That amount's about $135,000, so that's about 2e. When you're looking at a potential, for the near future anyways, you need about $500,000 in the next few months. There's still some things that need to be worked. This is definitely a work in progress. And it's going to be a week by week, one by one, because of the way we figure it all. And who knows? We may reopen, and a month from now, we may be shut down. Who knows where we're going? That's my report.
Thank you, sir.
So, there is no old business. We'll move on to new business. And the first item, 5A, is approved district-operated childcare program. Recommended action is whereas the education law authorizes a school district to operate a childcare program for children of students, and if space remains available, the children of employees. And whereas in light of distance learning occurring in many schools across the state, the district desires to extend childcare to eligible employees whose children attend OESJ. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the district authorizes a childcare program to operate for the benefit of the school-aged children of district employees, subject to criteria established by the superintendent of schools. Can I get a motion on that? Anyone? Sarah's the first. Dean with the second.
Discussion?
So, we have a list. I would say that the Association of Professionals, anyway, has put together a list of staff that has, have children requesting, anyways, at the time that they gathered the results. So, we would be looking to staff, a person to be able to watch. There's obviously red group, gray group, like everybody else with the hybrid, because their kids are attending one of the other groups. And then, obviously, on Wednesday, when we don't have any students in the building, we could certainly cover it with our own staff. But the conversation that's been taking place is that this would occur at a cost to the staff members, meaning that the staff members would have to pay the cost for the daycare. The district would not be footing that bill. The district would be providing the service, and the staff members would be providing the payment for such program, depending on what it would cost. Right now, with the numbers we have, it could potentially be done with one person, adult-wise, to watch those kids, depending on the room and availability of what space we have. But it could result in more. And it will still end up in a fairly minimal cost to the staff members, but a cost that they're certainly going to incur.
Was there an age limit in it?
It's school-aged children. You know, different districts are doing different things. We have not had a request beyond 8th grade. And I could, to be honest with you, I would say I would not honor requests beyond 8th grade at this point. But depending on the requests that come in, I think we deal with them on an individual basis to determine the need for staffing. And once that need for staffing is established, and we know what students are going to attend, then it determines what the price per child it would be for those staff members utilizing the daycare. I don't have it with me. It's... But we have no other students in the building on Wednesday, so we have all the space in the world. Half and half. Depends, it depends on the space we... Yeah, we've discussed it. Yeah, we feel confident we could have the space. The assistance provided in the school. Of course, same, all the same social distancing guidelines would need to be followed. Would not be a situation where they're following any other rules, or any different rules, and they are the days they're in school. So, again, once we determine the exact number this is made official, then we determine need for space and need for staff to cover that, those number of kids. And again, it's been made very well known, we're willing to look into provide the service, but that service will come at a cost to the staff members who are using the service.
Is it like a break-even operation?
Well... Correct. Well, the cost to the staff members that have to man, man the rooms that the children are in. So, if it's one sub at $90 a day, times four days a week, you pretty much do it like that. If it turns into more than one staff member needed, or one person that you have to bring in as a sub, it could turn into $180 a day, times four days a week.
That's how it would be?
Correct. Potentially, yes. That's the ramifications of that. So, and I think the, it's the right thing to do to provide the service. But at the same time, I think the, it's the right thing to do to expect the cost of being cured by the, by the staff, staff members and not by the taxpayers. Difficulties in finding childcare, yep. And there are certainly options that staff have at their disposal to remain at home because of childcare that would certainly present an issue for the district when it comes to not having that staff member here for up to 12 weeks at 2/3rds pay. And then, and then, yes, if, if the staff members have that ability to do that, the leave at 12 weeks at 2/3rds of their pay, we still need to find a certified teacher to replace them. So, the cost for the district goes. And after the finance committee report you just heard, that, that wouldn't be good. Not to mention the fact, I just think, again, it's, the only way for the children in this district to be educated is with their teachers. If the teachers aren't here, they're not getting educated. So, but if providing this service allows education to happen on a more regular basis by the teachers that we hired to teach our children, I think it's an equitable service to offer, especially if the cost is being incurred by the staff members that are using it, and not by the taxpayers. It depends on the number of students. All we have right now is a rough estimate of an initial survey that was done weeks ago. So, some people might have secured daycare since then. Some might not, may not have, and still want the service. But once we have, this is board-approved, and we put out official notice that we're offering this, and there are parameters. Again, it has to be students that attend our district and a district staff member. So, if they work in our district and their child attends our district, then they're eligible. And some of that falls back to insurance liability, making sure that it's covered under insurance and our liability insurance. So...
So, question is, even by the parent, our advice criteria is established by the superintendent.
Yeah, I would work out with...
I'm just looking at the wording, and I'm trying, nowhere does it say that except, "subject to criteria established by the superintendent."
Which basically just means I would, I would work with the individual parents, or even with the bargaining units, and the people that were in the bargaining units. And if the person wasn't in the bargaining unit with the individual, to determine how, how the best way to get the payment to the district. There's a couple of different options on how that could occur, but we've had discussions. So, we would just come up with what the best option was. And again, I would consult Billy Joe.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. But what I'm saying, because the language that's written in this motion, nowhere does it literally spell out that this is at no cost to the district. How do you, how do you, where is that covered?
I think it's in a cover and agreement between ourselves and the parents that are going to use the service.
Am I being obtuse?
It's subject to criteria.
Is that, is it covered under something?
That's what I would call it.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Is it covered in that line?
It's simple. I mean, if you want to use the service, here's what it's going to cost. If you don't want to pay, then service isn't, isn't there.
I get Dean's point, though. I think it should stay in there. Stay in there that it's at no cost to the district. Stay in there that it's, we put it out there to, as an attempt to keep staff coming into work every day.
I think that's why, uh, question. Have to explain why we're doing this. School offering daycare, I want some. If you explain that it's a, that it's a cost to the district in an effort to keep the class...
A lot of employers...
Yeah, we're not the only school doing this. This is being done. It's a conversation in HF and Bosse's. It's a conversation elsewhere, you know, outside of HF and Bosse's. So, I know of multiple school districts that have already approved this and are already officially providing the service. So, we're not, we're not alone in this.
I'm not opposed to the program at all. I'm just concerned about the language.
Can you amend the language?
We could. Motion to amend. Can we, do we have to have a meeting next week, and can it wait?
I'm not sure yet. This isn't going to take effect until students come to school, which is 14. So... There is a possibility of a need for a meeting next week, but I can't say it for sure yet.
Let's, um...
They're getting together Wednesday. Interviews.
Let me think.
Like I said, I'm in favor of the program.
Oh, I, I completely understand what you're saying. I agree.
We're involved, as are you, and you, and you.
So, can we get a mo, can we first ask the two to withdraw their motions on this?
I'll just get mine.
Resign your motion. Sarah rescinds, Keith rescinds. Now, can I get a motion to amend?
I've been called worse. Sorry.
I'm nailing Billy Joe today.
Sorry.
So, can I get a motion to amend this item to add language? It says whereas the district realizes the need to have their...
I think you put it in the last line, Dean. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the district authorizes a childcare program to operate for the benefit of school-aged children of district employees at no cost to the district, subject to criteria established by the superintendent.
Perfect. Can I get a motion to amend the item A to add that language to it?
I'll make the motion.
Dean's got it first. Anybody on the second? Anybody second to adding that language?
Let me read it again?
Yeah, say it again. One more time for Stephanie.
It's the last line. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the district authorizes a childcare program to operate for the benefit of school-aged children of district employees at no cost to the district. Yeah, and then the rest of it. Subject to criteria established by the superintendent.
Dean moved first to amend the language. Do I have a second to amend the language? Jeremy, second to amend the language. Vote to amend the language?
Yes.
Yes. Six-zero, language amended. Now, let's... Vote on the motion. Dean got the first. Delly with the second. Any discussion? Vote?
Yes.
Yes. Easy peasy. Six-zero motion carried. And I understand the point of, this is going to be, you know, public record. So...
I know what she was thinking.
Okay. That's the first one. On to B. Memorandum of Agreement for Retirement Incentive. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Oppenheim and Frey's St. Johnsville Central School District hereby approves the memorandum of agreement by and between the district and the Oppenheim and Frey's St. Johnsville Association of Professionals dated September 1st, 2020. In regard to retirement incentive, authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement and ratifies and approves the payment of money contained therein. And you can see under the content, there it is. Can I get a motion on that? Dean Shelley, any discussion? Vote? Yes. Six-zero motion carried. Next one is to approve leave of absence of typist point, an appointment of school bus driver, dispatcher. Recommended action, be it resolved that the Board of Education of OESJ Central School District on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools does hereby grant Holly Burnage to leave of absence from her employment as a typist effective at the close of business on September 3rd, 2020, and ending not later than the date upon which the results from the competitive examination for the position of school bus driver, dispatcher, are received or June 30th, 2021, whichever shall occur first. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the OESJ Central School District upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools does hereby provisionally appoint Holly Burnage to the position of school bus driver/dispatcher effective September 3rd, 2020, at a prorated salary of $45,000, subject to the rules of the Fulton County Civil Service Commission. In accordance with the civil service rules, such appointment is a provisional appointment pending the creation and administration of a test, and therefore is, and is therefore not subject to probationary period of permanent appointment at this time. In the event Ms. Burnage does not test into the position of school bus dispatcher, she may return to her position as typist. Motion, please. Sarah with the first. Shelley with the second. Any discussion? Vote? Yes. Five yes, one abstaining. Approved leave of absence of teaching assistant and appointment of provisional typist. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Oppenheim and Frey's St. Johnsville Central School District, the district, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby provisionally appoints Kimberly Trumble to the position of typist effective September 1st, 2020, at step one of the typist salary schedule of $29,876. In accordance with the civil service rules, such appointment is a provisional appointment pending the creation and administration of a test, and therefore is not subject to a probationary period or permanent appointment at this time. Be it resolved, also resolved, that Ms. Trumble is hereby granted a leave of absence from her current position as a teaching assistant for a period from September 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, for the purpose of accepting the typist assignment. In event Mrs. Trumble is terminated from her provisional appointment, is not appointed to a probationary typist appointment, does not successfully complete her probationary period, or is terminated from such probationary period, she shall have the right to return to a teaching assistant position with the district. Mrs. Trumble acknowledges that she will accrue vacation leave as a typist, but in the event she returns to the teaching assistant position, she will forfeit any vacation leave she accrued in her capacity as a typist. Motion, please. Sarah. Jeremy, any discussion? Vote? Yes. Six-zero motion carried. And I said Mrs., because I'm pretty sure she's a Mrs. Uh, we're on to item E, technology teacher term appointment. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Oppenheim and Frey's St. Johnsville Central School District hereby appoints and employs Joseph Brown to a term position as a technology teacher for a maximum period, September 3rd, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, at a prorated salary of BA step 2, on a teacher's salary schedule. $44,604 physical education, initial reissuance. This is a term appointment in effect no later than June 30th, 2021. It is subject to early termination by the district or extension by further action of the board. It is not a probationary appointment. It is specifically acknowledged that Mr. Brown has agreed to waive any rights he may have through probationary appointment and consideration for tenure. And such agreement is evidenced by a writing signed by both parties. Motion, please. Dean's the first. Sarah, any discussion? Vote? Yes. Six-zero motion carried. Next item is the resignation of an elementary teacher. Motion to accept the resignation of Susan Pedrick as an elementary teacher for the purpose of retirement effective September 2nd, 2020, with regret. Sarah? Shelley? Any discussion? Vote? Yes.
Someone who let your child trouble with reading after he's in secondary.
Sophia had it too.
She's a good teacher. She will be missed. Okay. On to the other resignation. Motion to accept the resignation of Shawan Etherington as an elementary teacher for the purpose of retirement effective October 1st, 2020, with regret. Dean with the first. Sarah with the second. Any discussion? Vote? Six-zero, motion carried.
I don't know how much it matters, but I think it's...
It wasn't me for Pedra. Shawan right now.
We see Etherington now, but I'm... Motion by Sarah, second by Shelley.
Sarah and Shelley, yeah.
Yes. You got it. Eric, Shelley. You got it.
Okay. Another resignation. Item H, motion to approve the resignation of the following staff stated below with regret. Yvonne Spraker, part-time aide. Resignation effective date? August 23rd, 2020. Kristen Lehman, part-time aide. Resignation date, September 2nd, 2020. Dean with the first. Shelley with the second. Any discussion? Vote? Yes. Six-zero motion carried. Item I is appointments for instructional and non-instructional staff. Motion to approve the following appointments for instructional and non-instructional staff. Emily Heiser. This is under the instructional. Emily Heiser, substitute teacher, September 8th, 2020, for the annual substitute salary rates pending fingerprint approval. Sue Pedrick, substitute teacher, September 8th, 2020, for the annual substitute salary rates. Non-instructional. William Leon, part-time custodial worker, September 3rd, 2020. $11.80 per hour effective December 31st, 2020. Hourly rate will increase to $1,250 for New York State minimum wage requirements. Anthony Smith, part-time custodial worker, September 3rd, 2020. $11.80 per hour. On December 31st, 2020, hourly rate will increase to $1,250 for New York State minimum wage as pending fingerprint approval. Jennifer Smith, substitute bus driver, September 3rd, 2020. The hourly, hourly rate of step one of the salary schedule for bus drivers pending fingerprint approval and physical exams. And I have a motion on them appointments. Sarah. Any other motion? Well, I'm giving it to Jeremy. Any discussion? Vote? Yes. Six-zero motion carried. Next one is extracurricular appointment. Motion to appoint the following people to the stated extracurricular appointments for the 2020-2021 school year. Travis Heiser, athletic coordinator, the 2020-2021 school year, at a stipend of $5,240. Motion, please. Sarah? Shelley? Any discussion? Vote? Okay, discussion. Okay, discussion.
What happens if there is one?
Oh, here's, I've been holding off on this one, but for example, Mr. Heiser attended a three-hour meeting today in Mayfield for the WAC AD meeting, he's attended WAC AD meetings over the summer because they do continue to meet. And I, I, there, there's still schedules that need to be canceled, uh, I. Put all the schedules together, if, if even if something happened, the fall season, which is still up in the air, was to not officially happen, there are still plans for a November date, start date, a January start date, and there's a lot of planning. Meetings, monthly meetings that he's gonna have to attend. And like I said, he's been attending those up to this point and, and putting in the legwork and even if there's not actual sports being played on a field in the next couple of weeks, there still is a lot of work to be done. As I've said before, I put a freeze on many of these, but, you know, my, my opinion, superintendent, is that this justified to appoint him to this position because of the work he did.
Any other discussion? Vote?
Yes.
Yes, six, zero, motion carried. Um, other business, any other agenda items? I do want to ask, before I forget, Jeff, have they done anything further on them panels in the auditorium? Have they figured anything out yet? Okay. And I, did I hear we're looking for a certificate of occupancy for the auditorium?
Correct.
So it's gonna be done af, you know, can be done when it gets done, but we're still gonna try to get in there. Yeah. So, I guess having said that, the only other thing, I guess, we, you know, I was just gonna say, and I, and I'm guilty of it myself of getting this agenda and not looking at it, but if we all looked at the agenda, we could have caught the item, probably caught the item before the meeting, you know, we could have had the language change, i- i- it just help it, you know, I guess I'm just, because I'm guilty of it myself. Kinda know what's going on, you don't open it up, but. That's all, I mean, it's gonna happen, but. Uh, at this time, public may address the board. Okay, well, alright.
How are we, Mr.?
We're missing.
Where is she?
She's over there.
Your house.
Um, put this sign up front. It was turned off, it had been on all night. And, um, it's off right now. And I'm wondering if it's the date of the start of school was added to it, so the people that are not receiving the information from the school, you know, would say September fourteenth, first day of classes, whatever, back or whatever. And it was left down for a few nights off.
We'll, we'll look into it and rectify it.
Um, so I'm not gonna give the whole public, you know, message.
Because it's just all of us here.
Well, after that, anybody else? Anyone? That's it. I don't think we have an executive session. So can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Shelley? Dean? Four fifty-one PM, let's vote.
Six.
Six forty-five PM, let's vote. Yes.
Dean's over.